Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you, Troy. Before I call the meeting to order, we're going to begin with our invocation. We're honored to have Reverend Dr. Carissa Murray, Senior Pastor, with us to begin our meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Friends, as we gather here today, we pause to give thanks to our loving and gracious God for all the many blessings in our lives and for this wonderful community in which we live. We come before you to acknowledge the responsibility entrusted to us as citizens and leaders. So may your wisdom guide our discussions, may respect shape our interactions, and may our decisions be made with integrity and a commitment to serve the common good. God, today we especially give you thanks for your servant, Mr. Dale Erickson, who has been an example of loving God and loving neighbor through his service to our country and to this community. His courage, sacrifice, and devotion are a true testament to his faith and calling, and may it be an inspiration for us all. Today, may we embrace this opportunity to lead with courage, listen with compassion, and act with wisdom. We are grateful for the ability to represent our community, and we ask for insight, patience, and unity as we work together for a brighter future. So may this meeting be productive, meaningful, and filled with purpose. And in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend, for that centering prayer. We certainly appreciate that. So at this time, I'm going to ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for Thank you so much for that. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do, I'm going to ask the attorney if we have certification of today's agenda.
Yes, sir. The county attorneys reviewed all items on the agenda, and you've appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No.
No, sir.
And I have none. With that, we are moving on to Item 2, which is our ceremony, an incredible proclamation today, beginning first with Item 2A, the recognition of Dale Erickson. And you may be seated while we recognize Dale.
Colleagues, I want to take this opportunity to, am I on? Can you hear me? Hey, all right. Colleagues, I want to take this opportunity to introduce you to an extraordinary veteran that we've had, living here in Douglas County for many, many years. Dale Erickson served in the United States Army. He has been the, a past commander of our American Legion unit here in Castle Rock, twice. Many years, many years. All I know is the very first time I ever got a phone call from the American Legion, it was actually from Mr. Erickson, and you were the commander, and you were inviting me to the annual banquet, and you promised me roast beef, and I didn't go. But I appreciated the invitation. He is, he is obviously a great, great example of the many veterans who have chosen to call Douglas County home. He is literally, every time I speak to a guy from the American Legion, they all tell me about Dale. And he is a great example and absolutely worthy of our recognition today. Now, I'm remiss because I forgot to bring down something to present to you, sir. However, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle.
Oh, I look forward to learning more, and I look forward to honoring this fine member of Douglas County. You know, we have so many folks that really make Douglas County a great place to live, and it is simply an honor of mine that I'm able to be here today to pay tribute to Mr. Erickson and thank him for being in attendance today, and more so, thank him for his years of service to both our nation, our state, and also to Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle, and I agree 100% with the sentiments of my colleagues. You know, it's very special to be in Douglas County and to serve this community because in Douglas County, we do pause to recognize those who have sacrificed all for our country. We do take moments to really acknowledge those that dedicate their lives to making sure that Americans can stay free, whether it's our phenomenal military or those working in public safety on a daily basis. And so I as well am looking forward to hearing more about Mr. Erickson, and again, a tremendous thanks and debt of gratitude for your service, sir. Commissioner Teal.
Colleagues, if you'll join me, let's go down front. We have a certificate to present to Sergeant Erickson and his lovely wife, and let's grab a picture with the Honor Guard and the pipers in place. We're going to trade you. We're going to give you a certificate, but you've got to come up here and speak and say a few words first. Come on up.
Says, please do not touch your microphone. I'm shocked. I have no idea this was coming after the, this was really quite a surprise, and I don't have nothing to say right now. But I'm quite surprised to see this many people show up for one little guy who had his feet on the ground for 22 years and had quite a bit of time for the Legion. And I'm really proud of the Legion post at Castle Rock. When I was commander, we had 32 members when I was, got to be commander. They had a meeting, and they want me to go out the car to get something. I come back, they said they had an election. You were elected as commander. And that hung around for 10 years or a little better, but I'm proud to see that the post is really growing, and I'm glad to see that there's many dedicated people that are following along. And that's about all I have to say, and I'm proud of these color guard from the Douglas County Sheriff's Department. They are sharp. They remind me of some of the ones, things we had to do along the way, too. So, thanks again, everybody.
Hang on a second there, Sergeant. You haven't been ordered to retreat. Come on back up. Come on back up. We've got a picture to take with you, pal. You got a certificate you've got to get, which I guess I said you'd speak, and then we give you a certificate. But we're going to do that front. But you know what they always told us in the Army? Don't go anywhere alone. Oh, don't forget your buddies. So all your buddies that are here, every member of the American Legion, and actually every veteran of the United States military that's in the room, please come on forward and join us with a picture, presenting the certificate to Sergeant Erickson. Come on up, Dale. Come on up.
Right, well, Dale, in recognition of all your years of service, whether in uniform, out of uniform, wearing that seat cap or wearing the green one, and all your service here in the community, we'd like to present to you a certificate of appreciation. That's my, that's from Abe Kevin and I, all of us. Absolutely. And then, I also, I gave you a coin when you walked in. Here's a couple more from my colleagues. You can't spend those anymore. All right. Drew, you ready to grab a picture?
Yep. All right. I can just get one right here in just 40 seconds. One, two, three.
Thank you. Would you like to have her up to join us in the picture, too? Your wife has six years. If you're able to, we can help you get up here. Oh, she doesn't. All right. Fair enough. Actually, I'm going to get one closer. How about one more round of applause for Dylan? Thanks so much, Drew. Appreciate it. Absolutely. You bet. You did, absolutely. Hello, Drew.
for giving the county just the chance to stop and recognize you. We've often said, it's a special thing for us as a board to have a veteran on our Board of County Commissioners, so Commissioner Teal, nicely done, as he's planning the next ceremony here. We're going to move on to Item 2B, which is a recognition of Eagle Scout Sam Calery. And I'll turn it over to perhaps Commissioner Van Winkle on that.
introduction. Sam Calery is an Eagle Scout who is here to present his project to you all, and I do have a certificate for you to present to him at the end.
Wonderful. Well, welcome, Sam. If you'd like to come up to the podium, state your full name and where you're from, and go ahead with your presentation.
Hi, I'm Samuel Callar. I live here in Castle Rock. Yeah, I'm going to talk about my project that I recently completed. I built a memorial project for the Canines that served at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. In order to fundraise, I had some help with the State Boy Scout Office. They helped me run an online campaign that raised about $15,000. The whole project ended up costing roughly $15,000, and we raised over $20,000. So we were able to give about $7,000 back to the Sheriff's Office for use for the Canines. I also fundraised at the county fair last year, and that was also pretty successful. So construction, I, we built right out in front of the Justice Center here in Castle Rock, cleared out 6 by 4 feet of rocks, and built a concrete slab. In order to create the podium, we built cinder blocks on top of each other and filled them with concrete. We used faux bricks called dry stack to build like the outside of the podium to make it look really nice, and used soapstone on top in order to mount the plaque to the podium. The plaque is made out of bronze. It has engravings and a picture of a canine, as well as individual brass nameplates with names and years served for every canine that has served so far, and roughly 30 years of room for more. The final product ended up looking really nice. It was very close to my original vision. We also were able to purchase a bronze life-size statue of a canine, and we placed that right next to the podium. I'm very happy with the way it turned out. Thank you for your time.
Well, Sam, thank you so much, and, you know, I'm sort of blinded by every, all the badges that you have. It's incredible. I know that becoming an Eagle Scout is no small undertaking. My late father was a member of the Scouts, and, you know, just the, I think just this last weekend, I was reciting what he always reminded me of, which is always be prepared, right? Always be prepared. And, you know, it's also been an honor of mine to represent the Boy Scouts of America in my private practice years, and you all are a phenomenal organization. I think we bought those bags of popcorn every single year, so good job. Let me open it up to my Board of County Commissioners for any questions or comments. Morton.
No questions, but good job, Sam. You know, my, I was not an Eagle Scout. I was one of those who carried the Life badge even to this very day, and that's kind of the joke is, yeah, they say the reason there's a heart on the Life badge, it's because if you've made it that far, scouting lives in your heart for the rest of your life. But then there's the backhanded slap of, if you have that badge and you don't get your eagle, your Life badge, it's the one you wear for life, just like me. So I congratulate you, my own son. I told him years ago to get his Eagle Scout because Eagle Scout is the first gift that you actually give yourself as a man, and congratulations on giving yourself that gift. I believe you will see from, for years to come, that that is an achievement that will mark your, it'll be your first truly major accomplishment in life, but hopefully it will not be your last, and it'll be something, this project included, you'll look back on forever as something that, one of the first things you accomplished as a man. As far as the project, hey, man, thanks so much. Thanks for giving this community something neat, a memorial that the Sheriff's Department can be proud of, can point to, but really a memorial that our entire community can be proud of and can point to. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal, and thank you for your service, not only as a Boy Scout, but for your son and other generations of Boy Scouts. I know that was a big part of your legacy. And also, thanks to Commissioner Van Winkle for really encouraging us, as he came on board, to do more at Boys and making sure that we're recognizing those in our community that are doing great things. Commissioner?
Yeah, and the reason we have taken time, and we try to take time every meeting, to honor someone like you, is really to let you know how thankful we are as a county. We can sit here in these seats a maximum of eight years, and I'm sure you will go on to great things in your life, and this is something that will remain with the county, honoring some heroes among us for generations to come, I hope. And I just want to say thank you to you, and also enshrining your service in our Hall of Fame, both you and Dale who came before. Well after you move on with your life and have a family of your own and things, it will always be enshrined, your service and Dale's before you will be enshrined forever in the Hall of Fame, and hopefully with that will inspire future generations. When I was a young man of your age, I don't think I would have ever thought to do something so spectacular, and I'm hoping that your story of being able to just take leadership and take an idea, turn it into a vision, and complete it, make it so wonderful for our community, is something that inspires future generations to do something that I haven't even thought of yet. So my sincere thanks to you for your service and give back to our community, and if there's ever anything we can do to be of service to you or your family, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. So stay put. With that, the Board of County Commissioners would like to come down and present you with a couple of items, tokens of our recognition and gratitude.
With that, we're going to move on to Item 3, which is our consent agenda. I'm going to ask, is there any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda, either in the room or online?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Please, the board, I do have a motion to approve the requests on all items A through V of the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner, did you have a?
Aye.
I probably didn't hear you. Okay. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. With that, we're going to move on to Item 4, which is our regular agenda, and Item 4A is a resolution subdividing and aligning multiple precincts as a result of increased numbers of active eligible electors in existing precincts in accordance with Section 15-01013 of the CRS, and Resolution R-022.005, and modifying existing precinct boundaries and establishing six new election precincts in accordance with Colorado Revised Statutes, Section 15104I. We have, I believe, not Cody Winslow, we have our distinguished clerk and recorder, Sherry Davis, here with us, and Jack Twight. Good to see you both. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to present this information to you and the public. My name is Sherry Davis. I'm Douglas County Clerk and Recorder, and behind me is Jack Twight. He is the Deputy of Elections, and so we're here to ask for approval of adding six precincts to our current number. We have currently 210 precincts. This will take us to 216, and by statute, we are required to review the precincts when they double in size. And there are a number of evaluating factors in the statute. In 1-5-101, there's 3A, 3B, and this gives us the direction that we have followed in order to bring this to you today. We have evaluated existing precincts, and we do that actually on an annual basis because Douglas County is rapidly growing. We've got, the resources that we use to evaluate this include planning, tracking, the development tracking application, so that we can understand what impacts current development may have on us in the future. We also use the projects data dashboard from planning. We've got the projects page from Lone Tree, the development activity map in Castle Pines, Town of Parker, the development information, Town of Castle Rock development activity, address search, Douglas County, and of course, the voter registration information that we maintain. So we would like to, by importing the population, the addresses, and planned growth information into the county's GIS tool, we identify any necessary changes to create the new precinct boundaries. New precincts must have fewer than 2,000 active voters when established, and as a result of that, we have six precincts that we will be, that we are requesting to add to our current precinct number. By area, there's one in Roxborough, one in Sterling Ranch, one in the Canyons, there are two along Stro Road, Rich Lawn Hills along Crowfoot Valley Road, and one in Crystal I also would like to take a moment just to recognize the work that Jack Twight and his team completed in order to evaluate this. We started this in January. They brought me a product, and I said, but did you check this? And did you check this? So they kept going back over it and combing through more and more data. We want to be proactive, and we want to make sure that we're not going to exceed a number that's going to be too high to manage in terms of our precincts. So they did a great job, the Elections Division, and Jack, and Amanda Peterson, and Zach Vasura. We've asked that this information, that this map be effective on July 11th, and that is to allow us time to complete the current election and complete the certification of that election, and then go in and start making the changes into our voter registration database to prepare for the November election. This will also put us in a good place for 2026, when we'll need more precinct information. What else? Do you have anything to add? What questions does the board have?
Well, thank you, Clerk, and I'd love to open it up to our board for any questions or comments. And I'll just kick it off by saying, we are really, really in a debt of gratitude to you for having not only so many decades of experience, but you run a very clean, transparent, accountable ship that is always adaptable.
Thanks again, Jack, and our best to Sherry. Hi, did you want to make any final comments?
No, I'm good.
Well, good news, it passed.
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the Clerk's Office. With that, we're going to move on to our next item under our regular agenda, item four, which is item 4B, a public contract for services to TST Infrastructure LLC for the Spring Canyon 2023 Local Improvement District Project in the amount of $957,000, Douglas County Project Number CI2023-019. And we have Dan presenting for staff. Dan?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Roberts presenting for staff. Up to this point, this project has really been administrative, and we're getting ready to kick off the engineering, so Amy Stathopoulos is in the room today. Amy will be the project engineer that handles this from today on out, if it passes with the board. Wanted to do a quick summary of the Spring Canyon LID and how it came to be. So as a background, Spring Canyon LID, Local Improvement District, is part of filing four in Perry Park. It was originally plotted in 1970. There are a total of 74 residential lots in the LID, and just want to point out that these were always intended for construction of single-family homes. That's why it was plotted as individual lots. At the time that it was plotted, the developer was not required to build the roads or utilities. The lots are zoned suburban residential, and the zoning does require that these lots have central water and sanitary facilities and paved streets. The LID was created in August 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners. Fifty-three of the 74 lot owners signed petitions for the creation of the LID, and the Board of County Commissioners created that LID on that date in August. The LID then went to the ballot for approval of the debt in November of 2024. There were a total of 48 eligible voters that could vote on that debt, and there were 29 votes in favor of it and 19 votes against, so the debt was approved in that general election in November. That election item approved a total debt limit, maximum debt limit, of $19,580,000, which would be approximately $260,000 per lot. Backing up a little bit to the creation, that creation ordinance in August of 2024 was based on a valuation that came up a total valuation of $26,400,000 of all those lots in aggregate upon completion of construction, with an individual lot value of $356,757. The next step that we took was to put out an RFP for interest in financing. The board did agree to fund the project, or to move forward funding of the project with no county financial support. First Bank did provide a rate sheet in response to the RFP. Just want to clarify that the LID bank loan will not be a general obligation of the county. It will be a special limited obligation of the county payable from special assessments. So today, we're bringing to the board the preliminary design contract in a total contract amount of $957,000. Construction for this project is planned to occur in 2026 and 2027. It will be a multiple-year project. And the funds for today's contract will be advanced by the county, but the design costs will be reimbursed by the construction loan after the loan is finalized, after bids are received in 2026. And that concludes my summary of the project. Want to open up to any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, Dan, thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Nor for me.
Okay. You know, just a couple. We've been down this road a number of times, have I think had many conversations around the concept of local improvement districts, and certainly this specific one. Can you reiterate for the public the outlay for the county? Will there be any cost to the county?
So for this LID, the board did direct staff to proceed, but with the agreement that there would be no county dollars participating in the overall project costs. It's just county time to administer the project, county time to manage the design. All of the actual design fees, construction costs, and construction management costs during the county will be repaid out of the assessment loan, and even the upfront money that we're going to be using today will be repaid out of that construction loan, which is then assessed against all those property owners.
Right. Well, thank you for that. I know it may be somewhat confusing to those that are trying to track what's happening here, but, you know, obviously for rural communities that do not have a metro district that are able to bond around matters that might create infrastructure, like water and sewer, and streets and roads, having the capacity to be able to create that infrastructure can be really difficult. People might be sold a piece of land, and if there's not infrastructure, it's real tough to buy that dream, build that dream home, or maybe sell it one day. The flip side, in our conversations, has been that the county is not a bank, and so our view as fiscal conservatives was not to have any county dollars directed toward this project that would not be reimbursed. And so we did, as you said, Dan, some upfront design and staff work to help, to be the glue, to make sure that this project could move forward, under the auspices of this independent community that went out to get the financing and move this forward. So we're providing potentially some approvals around that rubric, but I am really pleased that you've presented a project that doesn't have outstanding county dollars going into the LID. So thank you for that. Let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am. If you want to just state your name and where you're from, we'd appreciate it. Yes, please, yes.
Hi, and good afternoon. Thank you for letting me approach you. My name is Jennifer Erler. I am a resident of Castle Rock, Colorado. Been here for 25 years. Very proud daughter and granddaughter of Navy veterans, so thank you very much for that service. Owned two properties in Douglas County, in Castle Rock, and one in Perry Park, in addition to the land. Very pleased to see this moving forward. First, I countered the land in Spring Canyon back in 2006. It was, at that point, we went out and looked at the parcels and thought, oh, maybe in a few years. Here, you know, eventually, about 10 years ago, we looked into purchasing a lot, ended up purchasing a lot in 2017, saw those prices, you know, as high as 100 grand per acre, and as low as 30 grand per acre, with the dream and auspice of maybe having a chance to build. Really excited to see that you all are looking into this community. I'm very invested in the Perry Park community, particularly in Spring Canyon, having served on the Board of Directors at the Country Club, doing long-range capital planning. There is a lot of support and encouragement in the community, local to that area, to have the opportunity, not just to build there, but build responsibly. Those parcels were identified, you know, back in 1975, in a very deliberate manner that encourages meaningful and moderated growth, which is sometimes very difficult when we've seen some expansion, as I have in the last 25 years. We are very much in support of this, and thank you very much for moving this forward.
Thank you for those comments, ma'am. We appreciate it. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am. And again, if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Hello, Catherine Hart. I have lived in Perry Park Ranch for almost 30 years, and have seen this open space, and my concern is developing it without a plan ahead. I have seen a lot of the roads and the beautiful back canyons of Perry Park being developed by developers with basically cookie-cutter houses, and once we ruin a piece of land, it's gone. So I would like to know what kind of environmental impact studies have been done. This is, again, clear habitat right next to Pike National Forest for all of the animals that we see coming through, and in addition to just grasslands and everything else. I'm actually very dismayed by this, and I would vote no to have, in order to have more investigation about specifically environmental impact. Perry Park Water has its own, Perry Park Metro, pardon me, has its own Metro Board. It has its own water. What's the impact on the water supply? There's been a halt, a lot of times, on some of the growth in housing because of the extra burden on Perry Park water and sanitation. So I haven't heard anything that addresses that in terms of building homes and just building this out in general, and the congestion on the traffic, and everything else on our quality of life that we value highly. We moved to Perry Park Ranch for that reason. So that's my.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any additional citizen comment? Okay, not, yes, sir. And Clerk, if you can start the time for us, that would be helpful. Welcome.
My name is Mike Colombo. I've lived in Perry Park for 31 years, and I've been helping facilitate moving this lid forward, working, coordinating with the county and the staff, and believe that when the commissioners approved this back in 1970, they approved it with the intent of there being private, single-family residential homes in this area. And since then, 55 years, lot owners have been paying taxes on this property, funding many, many programs for the county, for the residents of the county, with really very little in return coming back. And so it feels like this is really an opportunity for these landowners to finally have their chance to build their dream homes in a location that they've been promised, quite honestly, for a very long time. I bought my lot almost 20 years ago, and at the time, we were told, probably three to five years, you'll be able to build. Now, when you do some research, you find out that really was not the case. The other thing that I think is very, very important is that when homes are built in this community, the property taxes will probably go up two to five times what they are right now on vacant lots. So I think the county wins big time if these lots are developed. I also know, because I've been meeting with Perry Park Water and Sand, that they have more than enough capacity to take on this development going forward. And by the way, the lot owners will be sharing in probably building $7.5 million of additional infrastructure for Perry Park Water and Sand along the way. So I just encourage you to move forward. We've been waiting a very long time. We've been very patient. We've paid a lot of money into the county, supporting everything, and we just feel like it's time for us to be able to move forward. There's been many other lids in the county that have gone forward, and we just ask you to approve the funding for the design to move forward from here. I do have, and I will leave these, letters from some other lot owners who are unavailable. One of them happens to be on a plane from Venice, Italy, coming here. They could not make it, and another one is another resident who's waiting to build their home out there as soon as possible, so.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. If you want to just approach our county attorney, he can log those and include them as an exhibit for us. Thank you for those comments. Thank you. Any additional citizen comment? Okay. Not, yes, sir. And Clerk, if you can start the time for us, that would be helpful. Welcome.
My name is Mike Colombo. I've lived in Perry Park for 31 years, and I've been helping facilitate moving this lid forward, working, coordinating with the county and the staff, and believe that when the commissioners approved this back in 1970, they approved it with the intent of there being private, single-family residential homes in this area. And since then, 55 years, lot owners have been paying taxes on this property, funding many, many programs for the county, for the residents of the county, with really very little in return coming back. And so it feels like this is really an opportunity for these landowners to finally have their chance to build their dream homes in a location that they've been promised, quite honestly, for a very long time. I bought my lot almost 20 years ago, and at the time, we were told, probably three to five years, you'll be able to build. Now, when you do some research, you find out that really was not the case. The other thing that I think is very, very important is that when homes are built in this community, the property taxes will probably go up two to five times what they are right now on vacant lots. So I think the county wins big time if these lots are developed. I also know, because I've been meeting with Perry Park Water and Sand, that they have more than enough capacity to take on this development going forward. And by the way, the lot owners will be sharing in probably building $7.5 billion of additional infrastructure for Perry Park Water and Sand along the way. So I just encourage you to move forward. We've been waiting a very long time. We've been very patient. We've paid a lot of money into the county, supporting everything, and we just feel like it's time for us to be able to move forward. There's been many other lids in the county that have gone forward, and we just ask you to approve the funding for the design to move forward from here. I do have, and I will leave these, letters from some other lot owners who are unavailable. One of them happens to be on a plane from Venice, Italy, coming here. They could not make it, and another one is another resident who's waiting to build their home out there as soon as possible, so.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. If you want to just approach our county attorney, he can log those and include them as an exhibit for us. Thank you for those comments. Thank you. Any additional citizen comment? Okay. Not seeing any more citizen comment in the room. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and kick us off. I've been a proponent of the LID program ever since I've been here on the county. The reality is, these are lots that were zoned years ago, and actually, all of you who do live in Perry Park, you've been, quite frankly, paying for capacity to be held by the Perry Park Water and Sanitation District, over and above the current usage, for all these undeveloped lots this whole time. So even you guys have already paid for the capacity, and you could keep paying, and we could say no, we could definitely say no, and you could keep paying for capacity to be in your water treatment plant, in your wells, in your water bank, for, for, not for lands that are not open space. They're just undeveloped. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward. There have been landowners on these pieces of property for, since before I was in grade school, quite frankly, and I'm 56. So, and these are individuals. These are not developers. This LID, our policies do not allow for a developer to come in and develop these entire blocks of land.
Any additional citizen comment? Okay. Not seeing any more citizen comment in the room. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners for any further discussion and/or motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and kick us off. I've been a proponent of the LID program ever since I've been here on the county. The reality is, these are lots that were zoned years ago. And actually, all of you who do live in Perry Park, you've been, quite frankly, paying for capacity to be held by the Perry Park Water and Sanitation District over and above the current usage for all these undeveloped lots this whole time. So even you guys have already paid for the capacity. And you could keep paying, and we could say no. We could definitely say no. And you could keep paying for capacity to be in your water treatment plant, in your wells, in your water bank for lands that are not open space. They're just undeveloped. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward. There have been landowners on these pieces of property for, since before I was in grade school, quite frankly. And I'm 56. So, and these are individuals. These are not developers. This LID, our policies do not allow for a developer to come in and develop these entire blocks of land. No more than 25% of any consideration for a local improvement district can be held by a single landowner. So it takes at least five to come together and propose one of these. I think it's a great idea because some of these are going dime a dozen. Those of you who talked about being landowners, you probably really appreciated the opportunity when you first got it because of how cheap it was, largely because you were benefiting from a development that had languished. And this is a good opportunity, in my mind, for moderately, moderate income residents to come in and buy land here in Douglas County and then make it what they want through partnership with the county in this program. We did not get into, as Mr. Palumbo and I had a conversation many, many months ago, we chose to not invest the county's money to move forward with this, quite as generous as we have with past local improvement districts. The costs on this one were just too high to, I think we felt, risk the public investment. So you get the deal as presented today, where we'll do the initial big contract and really only. And so the investment, the initial investment of county funds is actually pretty modest. And as we heard from the staff presentation, that's money that will come back. And for all those reasons, Chair and Commissioner Van Winkle, I do have a motion, if it pleases the board, to approve a public contract for services to TST Infrastructure LLC for the Spring Canyon 2023 Local Improvement District Project in the amount of $957,000, Douglas County, project number CI2023-019.
I second that motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I'd just say, Mr. Chair, if I could, that there's been a lot of hard work put in this for actually decades. But just recently, First Bank has stepped up and the citizens have stepped up and said, basically, we'll take the risk. We'll pay our own way. And for that reason was the reason why I seconded the motion.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner. And I tend to agree. This seems like a good compromise. And for communities that were not able to avail themselves of a Title 32 Special District or a metro district for infrastructure, this seems to make sense with very little to no county outlay, but a real nice private sector path toward getting this accomplished in the right way. So to Mr. Palumbo, certainly appreciate the advocacy and the work and the patience with this. I think it's been a great conversation with our staff. Anything additional that you would add? I know we have a motion on the floor, but want to make sure we're responsive to the citizen comments. Anything additional, Dan, that you would add?
I did want to add that we did a feasibility study with Perry Park Water and Sand District to ensure that they could provide the services required. And as an outcome of that, this LID does have to build a new water tank for storage capacity and a new lift station, which is one of the reasons it's such an expensive LID to complete.
Thank you for that. I thought that would be an important data point to share with folks. So thank you for that. I'll also be in support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries. Congratulations, that is approved. So we are a bit past 2:30, but I do want to make sure we have a little time for citizen comment. I do see citizens here for the next meeting, our public hearing. We want to make sure that those citizens have their land use hearing items addressed. But at this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda, which we already allotted for citizen comment on each of those. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with the Board of County Commissioners. If you would state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, you will have up to three minutes. As always, any disruptive behavior, such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked or attempting to disrupt the meeting, may result in criminal charges. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Any citizen comments in the room?
Commissioners, my name is Gary Wood, a resident of Perry Park. Gentlemen, we have your survey. For week after week after week of discussing this, you have told us we need to hear from 400,000 county residents. How many did you get? Oh, 3,617. You didn't hear from 396,383 people. These are people that don't care about what camping happens in Douglas County open spaces. They have no opinion. Out of 3,600, I would remind you that the good folks of particularly Southern Douglas County garnered over 1,500 signatures in opposition to minimalist camping. I think that this particular survey gives you the answers you guys have said you've been waiting for. And it's time for you to take a position of no minimalist camping on any open spaces in Douglas County. The people in the survey said they don't want it. There were about six people, Mr. Teal, in your group, in your district, that wanted it at a high level. At the lowest possible level, there were 49. As my representative, you need to honor what the people have told you to do. Mr. Van Winkle, your attention, please. Your people said the same thing, almost in identical numbers. Mr. Layden, your people were more positive about it. They don't live in a fire area. You're going to add 54 homes to Perry Park that has a one-way-in, one-way-out fire escape with an emergency backup, thanks to Tom Wiens. When you plan this improvement district, you better add some more ways in and out for us if you ever think about putting camping on sandstone. Thank you. No camping on sandstone, no camping on Douglas County open spaces. I want you to vote this down, put it to bed, so I can continue to go to work and take care of my patients.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Additional citizen comment?
Hello, again. Kim Gray from Larkspur. As you have stated, the open space camping program, at least the sandstone pilot, has put on hold pending the results of the countywide survey. The results of this survey are now available. The survey question, asking to set a priority from 0 to 10 for, quote, "creating several county-owned and operated campgrounds and associated amenities," end quote, was only able to garner an average of 3.6 out of 10. When I was in college, that translated to an F, unless it was graded on a curve. A full 42% of respondents rated the effort as low priority, with another 45 as medium, which was defined as three to seven. And I'm not thinking that three is very high, is very medium, but anyway. Only 7% gave the proposed initiative very high priority of 10. Bottom line, the interest in camping, as asked by the question, was only able to garner below-average interest, not even breaking the midpoint of 5 out of 10. Significantly, the wording of the question did not reference location of campgrounds, open space or otherwise, or exactly what these amenities would include. One could argue that presented with options of locations, like on an open space, the priority rating would have been even lower. As I have stated previously, the impact of camping at sandstone or indeed at any of our open spaces protected by conservation easements cannot be determined by a survey. Fire dangers, safety concerns, local resident impacts, increased costs to the taxpayer, conservation easement violations, none of these issues are negated by a survey. Public safety is not a popularity contest. Enjoyment of our open spaces is possible without designated camping areas. I urge you to honor the original intent of the conservation easements to protect the land in perpetuity and reallocate the open space funds earmarked for this pilot program of primitive minimalist, leave-notrace camping on our open spaces and the associated required annual funding. These funds could be reallocated to maintaining our precious open spaces and potentially expanding these areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. We'll take one more citizen comment and then wrap up our agenda for this item. We'll do about a five-minute recess and then reset for our public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Hello again. Thank you very much for hearing my comments. Catherine Hart from Perry Park Ranch. Again, I've lived there for almost 30 years. I was there during the Hayman fire. It was terrifying. And I fully support Gary and Kim's comments about voting no to Sandstone Ranch regarding the survey itself. I'm a professional market researcher and I take a lot of issue with the survey itself. And as Kim had mentioned, the mean is a 3.6 out of 10. Looking at the clumps that we have noted here on the final results, nine in 10 people do not consider open space camping or camping on open space in Douglas County a priority. It's zero to seven. It's not even a grade, you know, B average. And back to the fact that Sandstone Ranch wasn't included in the language. Where is the camping? How is it going to be administered? None of that was addressed. And again, I support what Gary and Kim have said, so I won't belabor that point here. But I want to definitely encourage you to vote no on this, put it to bed and take those funds for another project.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. With that, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the commissioners for any commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments?
No comments.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the folks for coming out once again. I think you've been to every meeting that I've, public meeting I've been at. And it's always in that section at the end that says, if this isn't, wasn't a topic on the agenda, then feel free to come and let your voice be heard. And you always do, and that's very much appreciated. And I thank you for, and for your dedication.
Thank you, commissioners. And, you know, I also appreciate citizen comment. And I'm really glad for all of the folks that come. I do take umbrage with each of those comments that were shared with us. What I heard is that somehow the county is stupid, your fellow citizens are stupid, and the person doing the market research is stupid. And the only people that have opinions are the three of you. And I personally am insulted that you continue to come here and occupy citizen comment time and make comments that are categorically untrue. Mr. Wood, I think you're very unfamiliar with a scientific survey that has a representative sample size. So at no time did we say we were going to ask literally 400,000 citizens. So a scientific survey would involve a sample size that would reflect our entire community. And we have that. And Dr. Hill, in his 30-plus years of conducting scientific research and polling for our community, I think reflects that. I want to be really clear about the information that was shared. We have that data in front of us. And first and foremost, part of our planning would involve a lot more conversation with the entire community about this entire issue. Nobody has ever said that we are officially going to be putting camping on sandstone. Yet you come here, week after week after week, articulating an argument that's just simply not true. And we've told you that. So I'm telling you, you're insulting this Board of County Commissioners by bringing forward misinformation, and you are not helping your cause, at least not with me at all. The survey results were really clear. So we had actually 13% and 45% indicating that it was a medium or high priority to have some form of county-owned and operated campgrounds and associated amenities, and 42% saying that it was a low priority. All of those are saying it's a priority. It's just whether it's high, medium, or low. But if you just took out the low and assumed that those maybe didn't want it to be a priority at all, you still have a significant proportion, 58%, that are saying, yes, this is a medium to high priority. So that was how it was explained to us. I'm very interested in addressing the needs of all of our citizens, not just the three of you. And for you to stand up here and say that we don't care about fire danger when we just had a massive media day representing the only heli-tac team in the state of Colorado that's risking their lives to put out fires, it's an insult to those first responders. So I'm disappointed in your comments. I appreciate the words that our citizens have shared with us, and we're going to continue to study it. With that, I'll ask for any additional commissioner comments. Okay, I'll close commissioner comments and ask if there's any other business, any other business for the board. Okay. For the county manager, we do have an amazing county manager report. Anything in there? Okay. So the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at 1:30. We'll adjourn for about five minutes and pick up with our public hearing. Thank you very much.